Good evening. The Board adjourned the executive session at six thirty PM. And there was no action taken during the executive session, but we will re-adjourn after the public meeting and no action will be taken at that time. I would like to call to order the regular CSD Board meeting for June thirteenth, June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at six thirty-six PM. Thank you for joining us this evening. At this time, I would ask that everyone join me in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. At this time, all that are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, are there any revisions to the agenda this evening? No? All right. May I have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
To approve the agenda for this evening?
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the agenda for this evening, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda for this evening is approved. I also share, as you all can hear, Board Member Tasha White's voice on the speaker. She is not able to be here with us in person, but she is adjoining us, joining us virtually. Our next agenda item is the approval of the minutes from the previous board meeting, work session, and taxpayer bill of rights hearing. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the May board meeting, work session, and taxpayer bill of rights hearing?
Move to approve the meeting minutes from the regular meeting, the work session, and the taxpayer bill of rights.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes from the May board meeting, work session, and taxpayer bill of rights hearings, please say aye.
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 The minutes for, thank you, the minutes for the May board meeting, work session, and taxpayer bill of rights hearings are approved. At this time, we will move on our agenda to the spotlight section. This evening, we will have one spotlight for our June meeting. I will ask Dr. Furman to please introduce our spotlight presenter.
Welcome, Board members. Chairwoman Jonathan Davis, thank you all for being here tonight. I'm excited for our spotlight. I am going to share my screen. Oh, thank you. Okay, so this June, we are spotlighting our Leadership Academy. We just wrapped up Cohort Two, and I am so excited to welcome many of our cohort members, and we're going to hear from some of them shortly, but did want to highlight what happened over the second cohort. So they attended nine sessions focused on various departments in our school district and how we operate. In each of the sessions, the department leaders would go over just an overview of their program, give some details on the work that they do in their department, and then we would break out our cohort members into small groups, and they would complete different scenarios and case studies, and really get their hands into what it's like to wrestle with some of the things that our district leaders have to wrestle with. So we completed those nine sessions. They also completed two book studies. They read Good to Great by Jim Collins and Leadership on the Line by Hyphat Zelinski, and responded to numerous writing prompts and reflections on those. And we just gathered some feedback from the cohort. We asked them a couple of questions, and I highlighted the top three here. And we asked them, to what extent did the Leadership Academy increase your leader capacity? And this was on a five-point scale. So it was really great to see that they felt at an average of four point two, that it helped their leadership abilities. And then we also asked how they felt the books. I've always curious on if these books are still relevant and helpful for staff, and they had responded yes, that they felt they were too. So I am going to call up three of our cohort members to come and speak to the board and just give a couple of comments, and we'll start with Dr. Jones.
Thank you. Kimberly Jones, I am the lead counselor for the district and the head counselor at the high school. I've been in education for twenty-two years, five as a teacher, the rest as a counselor and counselor leader. I've worked with many great leaders, and one that I've had in this district made sure to point out for us to consider the impact of things that we think about, things that we do, the impact of master schedule, personnel staff, transportation, et cetera. Starting there to do those things in many areas of my life. And when I engaged in the CSD Leadership Academy, it gave me an opportunity to dive deeper and understand more the inner workings and intricacies of CSD specifically and district leadership in general. It allowed me to consider impact on a more grand scale than I had before. Things like wrestling with what to cut or save when the budget balance was not at the desired percentage. Things like calculating cost per pupil and seeing how federal entitled programs impact that cost. Things like human resources scenarios and community relations, how we respond and why we respond the way we do, what we can say, what we can't. Right after we did the communication scenario, there were some emails that went out from the district, from the schools, for a couple of things that had occurred. And because of what I learned in this Leadership Academy, I was able to support some individuals that I worked with that had a difficult time understanding why all the details weren't put out there. So I really appreciated having that experience. And the perspective that I've gained has allowed me to improve the way I work with my peers, as well as the way I engage in my work. So I thank you for the opportunity to build these skills and improve my perspective. So thank Dr. Furman, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Next, Ms. Monroe? I like that you brought your own blanket. It gets a little chilly in here.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Furman. My name is Ms. Monroe. I am a fifth grade teacher at Fifth Avenue Upper Elementary. And my experience as a Leadership Academy with you this evening, I'm highlighting three main points. Number one, the engagement of meaningful dialogue with the superintendent about her role in the district was both eye-opening and rare. And speaking with my friends who work in various districts around the metropolitan Atlanta, this is something that never happens for them to be able to speak very candidly and openly with their superintendent. Number two, the presentation, and real but although altered scenarios given by the cabinet members gave a very clear and concise boots-on-the-ground perspective in the moment decision-making strategies in order to perform their daily duties. And number three, the opportunity to collaborate with colleagues from across the district with varying backgrounds and perspectives has been a phenomenal experience. This initiative affords central office and school staff to meet at the intersection of intentionality and exceptionality to remain district, staff, community, and most importantly, staff, students, folks. Thank you so much for this initiative. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Monroe. And Ms. Nichols?
Hi, my name is Kelly Nichols. I am a teacher and admin intern at Sally Street Upper Elementary. I'm also a mom to two Decatur students, a rising fifth grader and a rising eighth grader. Years ago, I went through an admin screening process in a different district, and it looked like panel interviews with powers that be and written responses to questions. My first child was born right after I finished that process, and I realized I needed to pump the brakes and be mom for a bit. So back forward about fifteen years, and here I am in CSD, and I find myself itching for a challenge and the opportunity to step into leadership role if one presents itself. I registered for Dr. Furman's Leadership Academy, not really knowing what it was about, but trusting that it was the next right step for me. After the first meeting, I felt re-energized about educational leadership and the impact effective leaders have on the lives of kids. It had been a long time since graduate school, but it felt like a graduate-level class. It was certainly not about panel interviews and written responses. Dr. Furman and her team created an environment that gave budding leaders like myself an opportunity to explore complexities of school leadership. We were given a glimpse into the departments that make our district go, but most importantly, we were afforded a connection with the individuals that run those departments and do the most important work in this district. We were able to ask questions, explore real-life scenarios, problem solve, recoblex text, and most importantly, listen. What we were given was way more impactful than any fit-to-get class. It was ever-evolving, relevant, and valuable. There's no denying that these past few years have been trying. I'm entering my twenty-first year in education, and they've been, I can say emphatically, the hardest of my career. But this Leadership Class offered me a fresh perspective, sort of a jumpstart towards something bigger than myself, something really important and something that I'm excited to constantly pursue.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols.
Thank you.
We didn't have you sign up, but do you want to share? You're good. Okay. Oh, we've got certificates. Not everyone was here, but I did want to recognize our graduates. Ms. Alice, we'll start with you. You're ready here. Congratulations. I'm a true teacher at heart to my core, and leading the Leadership Academy class allows me a connection with that, and it's always such a refreshing time, and it re-energizes me as well for what we're all about is education and watching the leaders grow. And I'm excited that two of our cohort members have moved up into additional leadership positions. So one of our cohort members, Sarah Coleman, is moving up to be an assistant principal at Beacon Hill Middle School. And one of our other cohort participants, Carrie Tizzy, a thing we changed this year is we opened the cohort to any staff member. So we had a school nutrition worker in our team, we had a caretaker, one of the after-school care aides from ECLC participate, and Ms. Tizzy was given a promotion, and she's going to serve as the administrative assistant at Oakhurst. I'm a positive and a good student. Now I tell the graduates, you're on my list. Opportunities up for different task force and work that needs done around the district. I'll be tapping them on the shoulder and asking them to lead some of the work. And I have to say, just overall, this cohort was phenomenal. Their assignments were turned in time, they were thoughtful, they really, really leaned in to the opportunity to really think critically about leadership and school leadership in particular. So it was a wonderful cohort. And then the last question on the survey that we asked them for feedback is, would you recommend a colleague to participate in the program? And every single one of them said yes, they would. And we will be starting our next cohort of Aspiring Leader Program, starting in the fall, probably mid, late September, early October. So thank you all for being here. Appreciate you.
All right. At this time, we will move on to public comment. Dr. Furman, do we have any members of the public signed up?
We do. We have two individuals. Our first one, oh, you're going to read them.
Oh, yes. I apologize. So we always like to read this right before we have public comment. The following information is included in the Board Policy Manual, and members of the public also analysis information when they sign up to speak. This serves as a reminder for all speakers and members of the audience. The opportunity to address the board during public comment is limited to district parents, students, residents, employees, businesses, and organizations. Persons wishing to address the board during public comment must sign in before the public comment period begins, and in doing so, will be asked to state their connection to CSD and/or the city of Decatur. To allow time for the board's other business, public comment will ordinarily be limited to one hour or twenty speakers. At the board's discretion, the comment period may be extended for a specified amount of time or a specific number of additional speakers. The time limit for all speakers will be three minutes. Persons speaking during public comment will not be permitted to yield the floor or transfer unused time to other speakers. Comments during public comment should be addressed to the board as a body and not to individual members. At the chair's discretion, persons violating this policy may be asked to step down. Speakers should be courteous and professional. Speakers are not to lift complaints about specific personnel or individuals connected with the district in a public session. The board will not allow abusive language, threats, comments, jeers, applause, or shouts from the floor. Disruptive persons will be asked to leave the meeting room. The chair may terminate public comments that are profane, vulgar, defamatory, or disruptive. Speakers may not address confidential student or personnel matters, but may submit such concerns to the superintendent in writing. Members of the board will not address persons presenting public comment or speak to the substance of any comments made during public comment. However, a member of the administrative team will follow up with the person speaking at the board member. Dr. Furman, would you please call our first speaker?
Yes. Dr. Laura Bowman?
Good evening to the boards. I'm Dr. Furman. My name is Laura Bowman. Again, I'm a mom to a rising second grader. I have a master's in education, and I've worked in educational equity for sixteen years. Since two thousand and sixteen, Decatur families, experts, and advocates have been raising voices to ensure all children have access to systematic and explicit reading instruction. We are still here. Two hundred and eighty signatures in county. For nearly a year, I've been asking simple questions like, what does our literacy block look like? Do we use three Q-ing? Do we use leveled readers? It feels like a lot of smoke and mirrors around what should be transparent and clear, unfortunately, that my role as a parent is to go along, get along. CSD gives lip service to SOR, because I think ultimately, we know it's what we should be doing fully. But CSD is still clinging to teacher and parent guides as a way to say, don't worry if the words don't match the text. If the child says, I see the stairs, when the text says, I see the steps, he got the meaning in the first letter sound. Don't worry about the rest for now. Steps and stairs are not the same word, and we should not be teaching teachers or children that guessing is reading. There's a gap. I previously shared pretty professionally, and tonight, more personally. In the last year, my son has been above the national average on the math in reading. Math is read aloud, so it is not an indication of reading, but an assessment of listening. He has threes across the board on his report card in reading. He moved reading levels from three Y to one G to two G and to two B. Are you clear about his literacy abilities? I'm not. There's a gap. I dug up CSD's literacy plan, and I saw Acadient. I asked for a copy of this highly-regarded assessment and learned in fact that my son has been below grade level all year. Despite my shock, I was glad to have the data. I was glad to have the information I needed to support my son. I told my friends to ask for their kid's results, and they were met with resistance to send home the test. Then I was asked to return the test because they were, quote, "not supposed to be copied." Acadient is an open platform. You just enter your Gmail, and you can have the whole test booklet. Why can't I have my child's results? Why can't the board see the Acadient's results? My instinct is that Acadient will paint a very different picture than math. There is a gap. Why is six years of advocacy not enough to move the district? Six years of families literally begging for structured literacy? There is a gap. I am confused by the resistance. I'm so confused. I want to understand reading in Decatur. I and dozens of others want to help our schools. Please extend an invitation so that we can work together on this and close the gap. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Megan Swingle.
Hello. My name is Megan Swingle, and I'm a parent of three boys, ages ten, eleven, and twelve, two of whom are CSD students, and one who is a rising sixth grader at the Skank School. Tonight, I wanted to share some preliminary results from a survey that Decoding Dyslexia Georgia is in the midst of conducting statewide. The survey asks parents of children with dyslexia this question. If you are choosing a private school, which public school district are you leaving? For a smaller school district with approximately fifty-seven hundred students, the number of respondents who say they're leaving CSD is disproportionately high. More people have responded so far that they're leaving CSD than even Gwinnett, the largest school district in the state with over a hundred and seventy-seven thousand students. This survey is still ongoing and still collecting data as it's being shared with dyslexia parent organizations all across the state. But for CSD to be right up there with school districts thirty times our size is atrocious. It's far past time we look more closely at why so many families are feeling the need to leave this school district after going through the special education eligibility process for their dyslexic children. I recently attended the CLIP Special Funding Feedback Meeting, and I asked where I could access the district's special education handbook, because it was mentioned several times throughout the CLIP Plan. I assumed that this handbook would be publicly available, because at the State Department of Education, their handbooks are all online. But I was told I would need to file an open records request to be able to see a copy of CSD's special ed handbook. I truly do not understand why this information would be kept under lock and key. It's confusing enough to navigate the special education process even without a handbook, but in CSD, we won't even give parents a copy of the handbook without an open records request? So I did file the request, and I received my copy after paying for it and after going to pick it up at the CSD attorney's office downtown. And as I thought, the handbook better is my understanding of the special education process in CSD. There was nothing to cry at, Carrie, about it. Why wouldn't we want all parents to have access to this guide? As you heard in the comments before mine, Laura and other parents have had to return copies of their child's Acadient reading assessment results. Acadient's results should be proactively given to every K through two parent to help them understand where their children are at in reading. If you look at these survey results and listen to parents you heard at the board meetings the past several months, they are but a fraction of the families who've been similarly impacted, and it's clear that we have a transparency problem and a systemic problem in the district level at CSD when it comes to working collaboratively with parents who are navigating special education eligibility process. If you go to the Decatur's Facebook page and look at the May tenth article about reading instruction in special education in CSD, you'll find a hundred and fifty-four comments and counting, with so many similar stories that detail a system that is failing families with neurodiverse children. As the Board of Education for CSD, please hold leadership accountable and ask them what they're going to do to acknowledge and address these failures. We need meaningful change, and leaders who want to solve problems, not pretend like it doesn't exist. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I will turn the agenda over to Dr. Furman for superintendent comment.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Just some general updates, summary of some of the learning opportunities. I've been continuing in my Courageous Conversations About Race Practitioner cohort to be an affiliate for Courageous Conversations About Race. It's been a really great course, learning a lot about the protocols and the systems in place that we can really use as a district to help disrupt, to help support equitable outcomes for students. Also attended our What Parents Need to Know About Reading Town Hall that was hosted by Dr. Beam and her department, and that was eye-opening. I was not a person trained in knowing how to read, so it was really great information to really understand what good reading instruction looks like, what we should be seeing in our classrooms. I think what came up for me the most about that program is the complexity of teaching students how to read and the really in-depth work that it takes and high-level training for our teachers. So that was really eye-opening to me, and just the time that it takes for students and teachers to really lean in and become those experts in teaching students how to read. Also, two stakeholder input meetings this past, since the last board meeting. We did our final student advisory team meeting, and that was really great to kind of meet with the students right before the end of the school year, get their final input on the Student Bill of Rights so that we can publish that for the upcoming school year. So I'm really excited to have that document out there for our teachers, for our students, for our community. And then had our final teacher advisory council meeting as well. Stakeholder engagement meetings, attended the Decap Chamber of Commerce meeting, which is a great group of individuals, and excited for partnerships that we have kind of on the horizon, working with the Decap Chamber. I also sit on the board for the Georgia State Principal Center, and I was excited to work with them this year on their celebration for new principals, as well as the selection committee for their Joe Richardson Leadership Award. That was really great. Working with my team, we did hire our new principal for Beacon Hill Middle School, and he is here this evening, and wanted to recognize Mr. Derek Thomas. Welcome, Mr. Thomas. We are really excited to have you join CSD and return home. When I was reading through Mr. Thomas's application and his response to his questions, even without knowing who he was, I was like, this is an amazing leader. This is someone we need in City Schools of Decatur. Being with parents, engaging with the teachers, and supporting teachers for what is best for our students, just shown so brightly. So really excited that he accepted our offer and is coming back home. My mentor, he's been working for my mentor, Mary Elizabeth Davis in Henry County, and when I called her for reference, she knew exactly who I was talking to. And for the superintendent of such a huge district to know that principal individually, I knew I was getting a good candidate. So glad to have you here. Completed all the final evaluations for our staff. We also hosted our Admin Council Retreat, which was a day and a half retreat for principals and district-level directors to unpack some of the initiatives that we have in the work for next school year so that they are ready to initiate those, they have the supports, they have the tools that they need to initiate those, so that we can really lean in and focus on the hard work that we have in front of us to start moving that needle in a more significant way to support the learning for all of our students in every single subject. Two sessions of our Leadership Academy, I already spoke about those, I'm not going to dig into that one. It was so exciting for two of our end-of-the-year celebrations, and graduation was just a phenomenal event. Want to give kudos to the high school and Ms. Lottier for organizing such an amazing event, and also our master ceremony over there, Ms. Stinson. She is the huge success, and just make sure we all have what we need that day. So thank you, Ashaki. And then our retirement celebration for CSD staff, that was also a really great event that we hosted right here in the courtyard, and it was just so nice to spend time with the teachers that have served our system for so long and thank them for their hard work and dedication. Do you want to just give a quick update? We are almost done completely with our FY twenty-three budget process approval for the board. This Thursday, we have our last mil- military public hearing, and that is at six fifteen PM on Thursday, June sixteenth. And then right after that, we will have a call to board meeting to approve the final military. So this has been a long time building this budget and going through the whole process, and I feel like we have a really good budget that is strong and will support the plans that we have ahead to address student achievement. So looking ahead, we have really leaned into reviewing our framework for equitable outcomes for students. And as we've gone through this plan, I really have kind of given the reins over on this plan to Dr. Beam and Dr. Huddleston. They are the boots-on-the-ground, really orchestrating all of this work. And one of the things that they came to me with is they were really looking at this plan was, the framework is, Dr. Furman, it's really our outcomes. This is what we want to achieve, it's not how we're going to achieve it. So I said, well, put a plan together. How are we going to achieve these equitable outcomes? And the brilliant ladies that they are came up with a framework which really addresses the core ideas about how we will move the levers to achieve equitable outcomes for students. So they've identified four areas that were, as we take this framework for equitable outcomes and kind of shift it into what are the levers that we're going to pull to and kind of shift it into what are the levers that we're going to pull to achieve those. We've identified, they have identified four. I'm not going to take any credit for this, this is all their brainchild, but I fully support it because I think it's going to really show us some strong benefits. So standards plus what we teach, making sure that we teach our students a rigorous content and that we elevate marginal voices through that content so that we're taking multiple perspectives into consideration as we unpack the standards. And then I'm going to go down to the green one, high leverages, high leverage practices. That's how we teach. So with standards plus is what we teach, how we teach our high leverage practices, that is use of scientifically-based instructional practices in the areas of literacy and culturally relevant practices. And we want to make sure those are universally applied across the school district. We know that we have teachers that need support, that need coaching, that aren't fully implementing the highest quality instruction in our classrooms and we want to work with those teachers and coach them so that we can get them to that highly effective range. So they've also developed tools for our principals to use to do walkthroughs. They've developed systems and put systems in place to make sure that our staff have protocols to follow as they plan and that they are vetting culturally relevant practices. So lots of great things happening in that for how we're helping our teachers improve. And then the other piece that goes along with that is the professional development. So we know if we want our teachers to improve their practice and affect positive outcomes for our students, we need to invest in our staff through the highest quality differentiated training for every staff member, really focusing in on what does a teacher need to help them improve their academic outcomes for students, really focusing on that as that coaching model and cycle and feedback cycle for our staff. I know if I was teaching next to a colleague, his strengths or my strengths probably weren't the same, what areas I needed to develop were probably not the same that he had. We want to focus in on that differentiated instruction and training for staff. And then the last part of this plan, which I kind of think of professional growth area as support for our staff, also what are our systems of support for our students? So making sure that each student has the opportunity, has the opportunity and the end. When those students aren't meeting the grade level expectations, what are we doing? How are we designing that specialized instruction to meet that specific student's needs? So what we'll see going forward is really drilling down into those individual students and naming those students and talking about the supports that those students need and how are we changing our practices to result in student outcomes? So I'm really excited for this plan. They always tell you that you're never the smartest person in the room and I would agree every time I'm sitting with Dr. Beam and Dr. Huddleston, they've always got a really great idea and know the right work that needs to be done. So I want to thank them for lifting this work and taking it to the next level. Also, as we look ahead, want to make sure that we're keeping COVID. We know that we are seeing a nice, a nice spread or acute spread of COVID numbers all across the nation and in particular in our community. So I have already put an email out to our COVID advisory team to get some feedback on upcoming changes or suggestions for our mitigation. The CDC, if you're not aware, released, I think on May 27th, new school guidance and protocols. So I've been digging through that and processing that. Also been talking with the metro area superintendents to hear what are other districts planning for their return to school in the fall? And then I did want to announce, we are changing, we're moving who manages COVID. Huge thanks to Dr. Huddleston. I can't imagine getting success as successfully through this pandemic without her leadership. She was just phenomenal and second to none. But as we look at our data, we know she needs more time to focus on equity and student support. In order to do that, we have, we are moving COVID mitigation out of Lily's office into Mr. Perez, into our operations department. So really excited for that change for Lily, Sergio. And I asked him, I was like, oh, how do I sell this to Sergio? And he goes, okay, I'll do it. And I was just so relieved that he, it was such an easy sell. He's like, I got it, we'll take care of it. So I have such a great team and want to give a huge shout out to the team here. So also looking ahead, this is very important for our board as we talk about new legislation that has been voted into law. The bills that are listed in red are areas where the board will have to create new processes or policies at some point. So some of these will need to be approved at our July board meeting and I will be drafting some procedures for the board to review prior to that meeting so that we can have these in place by the deadline of August 1st for devices concept bills. And we also have to create just some procedures that we post in our website for parent decks, for the Parent Bill of Rights, new legislation. The research required bill, I'm going to look into this one a little more deeply. We already have a policy around unstructured break time. Want to see if that is sufficient and meets the needs. So that may be just an easy one for us to sign off that we've already got that in place. The board also needs to review their policies and make sure that we have conduct policies for public meetings. That one's not due till October 1st and that's beyond public comment. So it is just a general statement in our board policies about how the public would conduct themselves at our meetings. And then the last one, isn't until January 1st, 2023, but we do have to have a complaint policy, a complaint resolution policy to allow parents that they want to object to meeting materials in any of our schools. So board members, I'll be drafting those policies, getting those out to you for review so that we can get those approved and in place by the time, so we meet those deadlines. Along with that, we are also well into the working of our board policy manual overhaul. We've been working with GSBA, they have gone ahead and drafted all the state required policies. Before I send those to the board, I'm going to review those with our legal counsel just to get their input and make sure that they match what we want to see here in City Schools of Decatur. And that time, we'll develop a timeline for how to rule that out and share those with the board so that you aren't overwhelmed with a long list of policies to review. And then I'll also be working with the board. The key policies that are outside of just, this is how we get things done, this is the background check policy, ones that address how do we maybe like strategic planning processes? How does that look in City Schools of Decatur? So some of those other key policies that really go beyond just the operational thing. Also with looking ahead, this, starting in August, we have two really important processes that are coming up. One is our strategic planning process for our strategic plan that will take us into the future, into 2023 to 2028. Also, our charter renewal is due in June 2023. So I will be starting those processes, kicking them off really in July with a finalized calendar. I'll share some particular dates here in just a second and running through March so that we can get those done and help make sure that that, any decisions in our planning is, we're able to take that into consideration as we build our budget. There is a large communication, a community engagement process with the strategic plan. So we'll give more details on that and let parents know how they can participate. And from that, we form what they call a planning group. And the planning group will be a larger group of people, probably about 40 individuals across the district, some employees, some community members. And they will go and work on what are the big goals, the strategic accomplishments that we want to tackle. And then those big goals and the big direction are then given to our action group. And these groups are mostly employees that will work on fleshing out, how are we going to make that happen? So once we've set those big goals, we know what we want to accomplish, what are the action steps that we're going to have in place over the next five years to make sure that we accomplish those? What are the measures that we're going to report out on? And then. Approve that whole process in March 2023. And then on top of that, we've got to layer in our charter renewal work. So once this planning group is done and we start peeling off a group to be an action group, we'll have another group kind of working in tandem to review and complete all the items that we have to complete for our charter renewal. Those things that don't really need to happen in tandem because what, any kind of flexibility we'd act for in the state should be coming out of our strategic plan. So I think it's a really nice timing that we can marry those two processes together, but it is going to be a big lift for us in the coming months. This will look familiar, it probably looks a lot like the budget calendar, but it was really helpful for me and kept me on track as we went through the budgeting process. So we've already completed two steps here with talking with GSBA, their presentation to the board. I've had an initial planning meeting with GSBA to get the timeline set up. We've already set the date, so August 9th, that is our August board meeting where I will present a final calendar with 100% of the dates and meeting times finalized. And then August 20th. And that line will be led by GSBA and they will be leading the board through a SWOT analysis and helping the board identify what are the goals they want to see as the board of our school system in the upcoming strategic plan and setting the metrics for how will we measure success. Then we will roll into some community engagement meeting time and then from that, we'll start working with our planning team, that's a whole day meeting. And then later in October, we'll plan on how do we take from, how do we take this group from the planning meeting, form our action teams. The action team, once those are formed, have a full day meeting and then they have time to work from November to January. They'll have to break out and do some small group meetings, work independently as a group and find some of that time on their own to really lean in and complete their tasks as well as start working on some of the charter renewal tasks. And then the board approval process, I want to give the board an opportunity at work sessions to hear the plans and to really work and have discussions with the teams that have developed these plans. So you'll see the pattern here of there will be a presentation at a work session for the board and then the approval of that plan will be at the following board meeting. So we'll do that in February and March for the strategic plan and then March and April for the charter renewal plan. And that concludes my presentation for the board. Are there any questions?
The opportunity for community engagement on the strategic plan, just that 90-minute session?
That's what GSBA has outlined. So there will be survey, but then, you know, as we go through the process, I've indicated on the bottom that I will be sharing regularly at the board meetings with the board as well as through different community, our different communication channels with our community so that they are up to date on what's happening with the plan and always open to feedback and input from our community.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Furman.
Welcome.
We will continue with the chair's comments. And so on May 17th, I had the honor of attending DES's Celebration of Excellence. I am in awe of the accomplishment of, accomplishment of so many of our graduating seniors and I can't wait to see and hear about all the great things that they do next. The next day, I took a walk up to DHS to observe the Decatur High students who engaged in a peaceful protest against a possible rollback of Roe v. Wade. I appreciate the advocacy and agency of these students and their parents who support them. I also appreciate the administrators of Beacon Hill Middle for facilitating the opportunity for Renfro students to express themselves. The following day, I met with Dr. Sam King from the Georgia School Board Association to discuss potential timelines for the superintendent search and we will discuss those in more detail shortly. On May 24th, I had the pleasure of attending the CSE retirement ceremony. I want to thank all the retirees for their service to the students of Decatur. Hearing about the legacies that the retirees left in our district was inspiring and it makes me want to do more. On May 25th, I enjoyed attending the Decatur Housing Authority's 29th Annual Excellence Awards Program. It warmed my heart to see so many of our students from the lower grades up to graduating seniors get acknowledged for their hard work. I appreciate the investment that DHA makes in our students through their awards and scholarships. Being at that celebration was extra special for me because I realized that I taught nine of the 14 graduating seniors. So it was really special for me and I'm just so proud of them all. Congratulations again to the class of 2022. I'm sorry that I was not able to attend graduation, but I heard that it was a beautiful day and program. Thank you to the DHS staff and the Wilson Center staff, including Ms. Stinson, for making it such a memorable graduation, a smooth and memorable graduation. This past weekend, I attended the Georgia School Board Association's annual conference. It was an engaging and informative event which included appearances from both of Georgia's gubernatorial candidates as well as the two state school board candidates. During the conference, I also attended a breakout session facilitated by Dr. Furman's mentor, the superintendent for Henry County Schools, Dr. Mary Elizabeth Davis. Dr. Davis discussed governance team actions that lead to student achievement. Henry County Schools has seen achievement gaps closing since revising their strategic plan. I was encouraged to hear how impactful the GSBA trainings were to the successful implementation of Henry County Plan, Strategic Plan, particularly as we begin the process of creating a new strategic plan with the help of GSBA. Month for celebrations, we celebrated Teacher Appreciation Day and Week, School Lunch Hero Day, National Principals Day, Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month, National School Nurse Day, and Better Speech and Hearing Month. And I just want to thank all of CSE's employees for their contributions to the City Schools of Decatur. I hope the summer months will allow you the opportunity to catch a little sunshine and relax a bit. Our DHS teams wrapped up incredible seasons. In addition to the outstanding accomplishments that I shared last month, DHS baseball complete competed in the state final four. DHS track and field athletes are state champions in two events, the girls' 4x800 and the boys' 3200. And DHS's girls' ultimate frisbee team are also state champions. So congratulations to all of those fantastic athletes. There are so many other wonderful events that have recently occurred in the district such as the Eagle Scout Project at Glenwood, but I don't want to take up too much more time. Please check the board's newsletter that will come out later on this week for a more extensive listing of all the great things happening with our students and staff. And finally, during the May board meeting, school board members during the public comment were criticized for laughing during the April work session. There were members of the community who felt that the business of the board is too serious for laughter. We had another light moment of laughter during the May meeting and I felt myself get anxious about whether we should be laughing. And then I remembered the tragedy that had occurred just a couple hours earlier that day at Robb Elementary School in Texas. These are difficult times for our nation and our schools. And yes, CSE's school board is dealing with very important issues such as student safety and equity. However, I hope that the community will allow us brief moments of levity and collective laughter because the reality is, is that laughter is not occurring on all school boards for a variety of reasons. Tragedy, broken trust, and issues of inequity are preventing smiles on a lot of, in a lot of school districts. It has been my honor to serve with this board for the past six months and I hope that we will continue to find reasons to laugh and smile together. That concludes my board comments. So now we will move on to consent agenda items, which include personnel report, school nutrition, and financial report. May I have a motion to approve the consent items 1 through 3?
To approve consent items 1 through 3?
Thank you, may I have a second?
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. The consent agenda items 1 through 3 are approved. We now move on to action items for the board this evening. Our first action item is a budget amendment for the School Nutrition Department for fiscal year 2022. Dr. Furman, can you please share an overview of this amendment with the board?
Yeah, so as we were closing out our budget for the current school year, our school nutrition budget item, there was a change in income for that because of the monies that we received from the federal government. So we wanted to go ahead and rectify that. So there was actually more money coming in for school nutrition and this budget amendment is helping to reflect that.
All right. Are there any questions for the board, from the board for Dr. Furman? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the School Nutrition Budget Amendment for fiscal year 2022? Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The School Nutrition Budget Amendment for fiscal year 2022 is approved. Our second action item this evening is the approval of the RFP 22-007 Custodial Services for City Schools of Decatur. Dr. Furman, would you please share an overview of this RFP?
Yeah, so over the pandemic, we contracted with a custodial service company to provide substitutes for our custodial team. And they have been doing such a great job, as Mr. Perez and I talked about, the opportunity to continue using custodial services contractors instead of hiring new staff to replace staff as they leave our school system for custodial services. So this RFP will allow us to expand that opportunity to use a contracting services for custodial staff. This does not mean that we will get rid of any of our current staff as there is natural attrition. If those staff decide to retire or find another position in a different, different job, we will replace them with contracted positions. So this, I think, is a really good benefit for the school system and will help us make sure that our schools are clean and well-maintained.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve RFP 22-007 Custodial Services for City Schools of Decatur?
I move to approve RFP 22-007 Custodial Services for City Schools of Decatur for FY22.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. RFP 22-007 Custodial Services for City Schools of Decatur fiscal year 2022 is approved. The board was provided monthly data reports for each school as information only, so we've all received that and had an opportunity to review that. We will now move on to our discussion items for this evening. We will now move on to our discussion items for this evening. Dr. Furman's team provided their state-of-the-department reports for the board's review. Are there any questions from the board on these reports?
There was no, there was no question. I didn't want to comment that this section regarding that terminology wrong, the K P I's, for example, didn't actually have any data in it, and so if we're ever going to share reports that talk about K P I's, I would like to see actual data to support those particular K P I's.
Which, I'm sorry, which one didn't have data that had a K P I in it?
Well, for example, I think that the H R report talked about K P I's regarding advancing rates, real equity, and a number of other things like that. There weren't any metrics actually to take a look at.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Our next discussion item is the timeline for the superintendent search. We received two timelines from G S B A with suggestions for our superintendent search. One timeline would have the board conducting community engagement sessions before the job is posted, and the second timeline would have the board conducting community engagement sessions after the job is posted. Both timelines would have us appointing a superintendent around April, two thousand twenty-three. Would any board member like to make a recommendation for the timeline that we will follow as we conduct the superintendent search?
I move to approve the timeline that would have the board conducting community engagement sessions prior to the superintendent job being posted.
Thank you. May I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor of approving the timeline that has the board conducting community engagement sessions prior to the job being posted for superintendent, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The timeline for the superintendent search is approved. So we have future dates listed on the agenda for upcoming meetings, training, and retreats. Board members, are there any questions about future dates for the work of the board?
I just have one. The city does want to reschedule the joint work session, so they threw out a date of April first, so I'll send the board an email, a follow-up email with that date to see if that will be a date that we can make the joint work session with the city commissioners work.
Okay. And then we will also wait to get a new date for our board norms meeting with G S B A.
Correct.
Okay.
April first, two thousand twenty-three?
August first.
Oh, August. You said April.
I did. August first.
That's a long time.
August first. I said they were eager to get that rescheduled.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about future dates? Okay. Well, thank you all for joining us this evening. The board will now re-adjourn into executive session, but no action or vote will be taken. Thank you and have a good evening, and the meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-nine.